Lisa Hessel welcomes everyone to the board meeting. She asks everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone says the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone returns to their seats. Lisa Hessel calls for a roll call. Batson is here. Benjamin is here. Carmichael is here. Drunky is here. Kotwell is here. Culcarney is here. Lisa Hessel explains that Dr. Denise Herman is not present.
Family emergency. She is this evening exactly where she needs to be. So we wish her well and we will welcome her back at our committee meetings next month. And we will review our agenda. We will begin as always with communication. Tonight, we are very pleased to have a full house of student recognition, which will start off our meeting. Then we will roll to an invitation for public comment. We do have a teachers' union report and student school board representative reports. We have a very interesting presentation around our inclusive fine arts class. And we will review FOIA requests as well as good news. Then moving on to our consent agenda. As always, I will remind us, the consent agenda includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion. These are minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, educational tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through extensive board committee review and recommendation. And documentation concerning these items has been provided to all the board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and transparency. Items may be reviewed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have any board members requesting items be removed from the consent agenda this evening?
No.
Seeing none, we will then move on to our items for action. We have one coming out of our facilities and finance. And our chairperson, Don Carmichael, will take us through item A. And then the following items are from facilities and finance. And Jim Batson will take us through those items. For information, we will have a superintendent's report that will be presented by Bryant Kelly. We will share any board comments and events that we've attended. We do have a brief ISB and COSPA report this evening. Do we have a CEDAL report? Nothing from CEDAL. Any other reports board members would like to share? Okay. Then we will review the future agenda items. We are retiring to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters under five ILCS 120/2C2. When we return to open session, no further action will be taken and we will adjourn. So it is my great pleasure to start with student recognition. Take it away, Dr. G.
All right. It is a great pleasure to be here tonight. And this month, we have a whole host of students in fine arts and athletics to honor, which is great. We'll start with our fine arts. We have a group of all-state theater kids and all-state music kids. I'm going to bring Dr. Drew Russell up here. I'll tell you though, one of the experiences that is unique to the fine arts is we all-state kids get to perform in kind of an all-star event. So I've been down there and seen Vernon Hills kids perform in the state theater play musical and in the musical performance that they do together with other all-state athletes. It's a privilege. We have an amazingly talented group of kids. Dr. Russell will talk about our Vernon Hills crew right now.
As always, it's been a wonderful pleasure to have the opportunity to work and also live in a community that values music the way this community does. It's been doing this for like 11 years. Every single time we do this, there's a bunch of highlights in the audience along the way. Like, they did help out all these kids. They, I say this all the time, they made us look really good. Very awesome. And we're happy to recognize two of them. First up is all-state theater. So what happens, these kids send in some videos and they're counted. They're accepted into what is essentially the top 1% of theater students that apply. And they go down in January and perform and they do this show. They actually go down every weekend throughout the week. They go down in January for a full week, rehearse the show, put on a show, and it's really, really awesome. We had two students this year in all-state theater that I will call up. First one was in set crew. This is Jonathan Provis. He's helping us out. All right. So next up is Ashley Robins, who was in the set. I'm going to jump up. What is all-state music? These are again students who made it through various levels of what is she? Just saying, I was deciding to go for a little bit of a head clearing walk through the music wing and was blown away by the sounds coming from every practice room, teacher's teaching. There's just like a very alive, busy environment down there. And it's that type of stuff that somehow these kids find a way to commit to, on top of everything else that they're doing, that is just inspiring. And these kids are some of the ones that are down there all the time. First up, Tyler Park, bass clarinet. Awesome. He's a young kid. Jay James.
Benjamin Freeman, tenor. Caleb Gumminger, cello.
Second time in a row, Eli Anderson. Ready for your pictures? This point, I will invite my, oh no, we're going to take a picture first. And then after that, my talented colleague Dustin Helby from Libertyville will come.
All right. Thank you so much. And again, with these wonderfully talented Vernon Hills students, we also have from Libertyville, Aditi Nair. Margot McGormly. Owen Gore. And Dakota Olson. And I'd also just like to add, Aditi and Dakota are also first-chair players in their section, which is also just a huge accomplishment. So congratulations.
Okay. Congratulations to you all. We're going to shift now to athletics. I think both schools have some athletics. Does Libertyville have athletics tonight? Yep. So Dr. Calentes, who is the principal of Libertyville, is at the super sectional girls basketball game hosted at Libertyville. So he's, he's working while we're celebrating here. Good luck to the Wildcats. We're going to bring up a wrestler. We had an exciting wrestling season this year. And we have one young wrestler who's a stud. He's a sophomore. He'll be up here for a couple more years, but I'm going to introduce his coach to talk a little bit about him. Coach Jesse Walton.
We're going to start off addressing the elephant in the room, and that's my, my face. Make a fun, it started nine years ago. Make a fun little deal with the wrestlers. If they place in state, they get to pick my facial hair for a week at work. So Ilya told me last night he wanted zebra stripes. So that's why I got zebra stripes on, on my face right now. But Ilya Dvoriana Koff is a sophomore here at Vernon Hills. And he's one special kid on the wrestling mat. He faced a lot of adversity to start off. And like the American novelist, James Lane Allen said, adversity does not build character, it reveals it. And that really showed this year with Ilya. He faced some adversity coming over here from Russia with the cultural barriers and language barriers the last few years. And has been working through that. He faced some other adversity on the mat this year. And it's not about how you start and anything, it's how you finish. And he really finished well this year, finishing second place in state, made it to the state finals. A couple of things about Ilya, just real fast about his stats. He is right now currently the seventh, he is the, he's the seventh, has the seventh most takedowns in a single season at 84. And that was last year as a freshman. He has the 11th most career takedowns and he's only a sophomore. He's one of five all-state wrestlers at Vernon Hills High School, and he's one of three state finalists. The school's never had three medalists or a three-year medalist, and Ilya's got a chance to do that. And I think he's got a little foreshadowing here with his shirt he's got on with champion right there of what, what's to come next year. So just wanted to celebrate this young man, the work he puts in and the finish that he had this year was pretty special. All right?
All right. For a few years in a row, we have celebrated our gymnasts, our female gymnasts at Vernon Hills. Have had quite a run. And we get to honor a couple of them here tonight. I'm going to ask Coach Denise Caton to come on up and introduce these two wonderful athletes, one of whom is a graduate this year. And so this is the last time she will be gracing this stage, but she's been here a lot. So Coach Caton.
First, thank you to the board. We've become regulars here every February and we're not mad about it. So thank you for having us again. Like Dr. G said, I've got two amazing athletes to talk about tonight. The first one being junior Livy Tron. Livy has been a member of our gymnastics team for the past three years and has been a vital team member to our success as a team. And along the way, she's found ways to stand out on her own. As a freshman, she came home a state champion on vault. 2023 brought more success, not only as our team, but she also brought three more medals home on her own. A third on floor, fifth on vault, and fourth and all-around. And the reason we're here tonight is to add another amazing accomplishment to her already wonderful resume. She placed fifth in state on vault again this season. Livy's an athlete. She never will take no for an answer. She's determined, she's hardworking. And I can't wait to see, like I said, she's a junior. So I can't wait to see what she does in her senior year. It's Livy. And then our second athlete tonight is Annika Chudy. She has been a four-year member of the gymnastics team. I got to meet Ani through the computer via Zoom. Her freshman year was during COVID. And I did not coach that year. So I got to watch what a special individual she was through a computer screen, which is amazing to say because to find that type of character that you could see through a screen just makes her that special. In her sophomore year, like Livy, she was a vital part to our team. She helped us 2022, 23 come home, you know, second place as a team. And she had medals of her own, a third place on vault, fifth on beam, third and all-around. In this season, Ani approached her final season with us and it didn't come without ups and downs. And not every season, you know, is going to come with sunshine and rainbows. But Ani's been tough. She fought through it. And that speaks to her character. She's very resilient. And I remember at one point, you know, her saying to me during the season, she's like, I just don't want to let the team down. And that speaks to the character she's learned through her family, through our school, is she's resilient, she's daring. And she always thought of others before she thought of herself on the team. This season proved that Ani saved her best for last. She became an IHSA regional champ on vault, bars, and all-around. She swept the IHSA sectional meet by being coming a champion in every event plus all-around. And then advancing to her final state meet. Ani earned her first medal after Friday's competition as second and all-around in the state. And then it all came down to Saturday. She took another second place on bars, earning herself her sixth individual state medal of her career. And then it came down to her last event, which was floor. She went out, had a beautiful set. You could just see it in her face, that moment she deserved that final score, which brought home a champion. Which earned her her seventh medal, a gold to end her career. She earned herself her, her last medal. She was also just recently awarded the IHSA all-academic recipient as well. So she not only excels in the gym, but also the classroom. I couldn't be more proud and honored to have been able to coach and support one of the most decorated gymnasts Vernon Hills has seen.
And then Vernon Hills just has one more, but I don't think she's here, is Kaitlyn Dodson here? So it is worth giving her her due. Kaitlyn was a part of our cheerleading squad, competition cheer squad, who as a team took home a 13th place in state after being sectional champions. And they were fortunate enough to have one athlete recognized as an all-state cheerleader, very deservingly so. And her name is Kaitlyn Dodson. Let's give her a hand.
I have the pleasure to introduce three wrestlers from Libertyville High School and recognize them for their state accomplishments. So if Luke, Matthew, and Owen come up here, I'll say a few things about you. So for those that, you know, we have one wrestler from Vernon Hills and he knows that wrestling is a tough season. It's a long season with, you know, matches on Fridays and weigh-ins on Saturdays. And the Saturday tournaments, you know, are long, long days. And so the accomplishment of just making it through the season healthy and staying with weight is tough. And then when you get to regionals, they have to compete at regionals. And from regionals, they have to compete and qualify to sectionals. And sectionals that they competed in is one of the toughest sectionals in the state of Illinois. And then when you, you know, go to state, you know, wrestling is six minutes to, you know, three two-minute periods. But in that time, you can make a mistake and next thing you know, you know, the other, your opponent has earned some points. So to make it to state is tough, but then also to place at state is, is just quite an accomplishment. These guys also had an extra weekend. I think the next meet, the next meeting, we're going to recognize the whole wrestling team. So as a team, they also accomplished and finished fourth overall in state. But for their individual accomplishments, so we'd like to first recognize Luke Burke-Toll. And Luke, I think you finished with a 42 and 18 record maybe at Libertyville, 19 pins? Is that something about right? All right. And at 175 pounds, Matthew Cubus. And Matt, you finished 75 and 19 with 37 pins while at Libertyville? Dale, Coach Edgar, he would have this all memorized. He would probably know every pin you had, every opponent. I'm not that good. But I think you were also up there with some of the records for the number of pins at Libertyville, right? All right. Did you set the record this year? You set the record this year. So congratulations. Fourth place at 175. And then at 215 pounds, Owen McGrory. And you finished with a record of 53 and six and 32 pins on your career at Libertyville, finishing in fourth place. Congratulations.
Okay. Moving on to public comment. First, I think we have three students. Are you presenting individually or together? Got it. Then I will invite Finley Roman to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Finley Roman, a senior at LHS. And I am a co-president of Echos, a club focused on environmental sustainability and policy within our community. Echos is committed to continuing its partnership with D128 for sustainability within district initiatives. We have previously encouraged the board to consider environmental sustainability in new capital projects. The following petition formalizes our request for a sustainability policy. It has been signed by 279 students, staff, parents, alumni, and community members, and outlines our request for a commitment to sustainability in the wake of climate and environmental realities.
Thank you. Next up, we have Sam Powell.
So I'll start by reading the wording of our petition. So we, the students, staff, and community members of high school District 128, in acknowledgement of the district's rising energy costs, the increasing risk of climate change-related damage to infrastructure, and for the sake of shaping a more sustainable planet for our future, urge our district's school board to take more meaningful and daring steps toward pursuing environmentally sustainable practices in our school. We applaud the projects the D128 board has implemented over the past several years to help lower our global footprint, including the high-efficiency lighting and parking lots at Vernon Hills High School that are ready for vehicle charging stations. However, we encourage the board to take more aggressive steps, such as, number one, considering sustainability in capital projects. With several, with several capital projects on our horizon, we're asking for a formal process to be put into place requiring the board, requiring the board to incorporate the three lenses of sustainability, socioeconomic and environmental, before submitting capital projects for building. Number two, decarbonizing the district through aggressive goal setting. The District 128's daring mission statement alone will not help us achieve the ideals that it represents. We must be setting goals to reduce our carbon footprint in accordance with the guidance issued by the US government's Fifth National Climate Assessment, which asserts that we must reach net zero carbon dioxide emissions by the year 2050. We ask that the board use the K-12 climate inaction resources to help guide the formalization and adoption of a district climate policy. And finally, number three, actively pursuing sustainability opportunities. These opportunities include, but not limited to, a transition away from fossil fuels and towards renewable energy sources, such as solar energy, investing in charging stations for electric cars, use of reusable cafeteria china and silverware in our cafeterias, commercial food waste and composting, improved water conservation and rainwater harvesting systems, permeable pavement, removal of buckthorn and other invasive species throughout our campus grounds, and the incorporation of sustainability into our culture and curriculum.
Thank you. Next is Lily France.
Hi, I'm Lily France, a junior and Echos member at Libertyville High School. I'm here to tell you about the 279 people from the wider D128 community that signed this petition. The petition was signed by 72 community members, 30 staff members, and 177 students representing both schools. Many of the people who signed this petition added comments to the board, including a student at Libertyville High School, Rachel Grove, who said, "While I might not be at LHS to see the effects of sustainability efforts, I'm an avid believer and supporter of a brighter and greener future. D128 is a strong district, and I think the students and staff reflect that. I know there are many conversations and work done towards sustainability that I cannot see, and I hope that the board continues their efforts toward a cleaner and more sustainable future to create an even stronger district. I feel very privileged to be a student at LHS, which has many clubs, student efforts, and teacher programs working towards sustainability. However, I believe LHS and VHS would be able to go even further with more district support." And community member John Katz Mariani said, "Please adopt all of the proposals in this petition. Our district has the resources to be a leader and a model of sustainability. This will make our students proud and support their dreams to become leaders in this field and actors in the movement to protect the world for the generation and the ones we hope will follow." And another community member, Rachel Tratchman, said, "Sustainability initiatives can't be a question of should we, but a statement of has to be now. We are asking the board to adopt a formal sustainability policy, and we are willing to partner with the board to make this a reality. Thank you for listening, and we look forward to hearing from you."
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Masolf.
Hi, I'm Brian Masolf. I live in the Libertyville District. It's recently come to my attention, two policies that have been implemented or will be implemented at District 128. And I have several comments about them. The first is the 50% floor rule, that any student can turn in work and receive no other than, lower than 50%. I'm well-versed in the research and understand that ideally, this rule helps close the equity gap and helps students from getting buried by one poor test grade. I also understand the argument that each letter grade has a range of 10%, except for F, which has a range of 0 to 60%. However, this seems like the change is being made so that there's equal probability of receiving all grades. School is not something that is chance. Grades are earned, and in theory, the grade demonstrates how much you understand about the subject matter. What is this policy teaching students? That even if they don't do anything or really try, they still receive 50%? My second question about the 50% floor rule is how do we plan to evaluate it? Do we have any way to measure the impact that it's making? If so, what are those markers? Additionally, do we plan to reevaluate this procedure at any point in the future? I'm a scientist, and I appreciate trying something new. However, experiments cannot be executed without additional evaluation, change, reevaluation. The other policy I have a concern about is the fact that students can retake any tests one time. I understand that we are trying to create policies where students can demonstrate growth. That's a good thing. However, I have many worries with this policy. The first is that it does not seem to be mirroring real life after school. If you have a major deadline for a project or a presentation, the due date is the due date. And if your presentation flops, the client probably just isn't going to hire you. They definitely aren't going to say, it's okay, try again. We want students to be put in these situations where they can make mistakes and grow from them. We want students to make mistakes now where it really doesn't matter. It will be, matter a lot more when they are paying tens of thousands of dollars for college or when they make a mistake at a major job. A mistake there could cost their job as opposed to making the mistake in high school, receiving a less-than-seller grade, and then growing from their mistake. It seems like both of these policies are gamifying education. It is giving students an out when they are actually not prepared to be assessed. It doesn't require them to be ready because they have a second chance. Can't do anything less than 50%. Life after school is knowing about how to do stuff and having the ability to take new information, learn it, and apply it. For example, I have a friend who works with an engineering firm that works with the new hires. He recently had to fire a college grad because she didn't know how to take the slope of a graph. She recently had to fire a college grad because she didn't know how to take the slope of a graph. Isn't that a mistake we would rather have her make in high school than somehow make it through college, not knowing how to do that and ultimately losing her job because of that? Right? My final comment is this: What do teachers think of these policies? Do they endorse them? Ultimately, they're the ones who are professionals and experts on the topics. They aren't theorists, like many of the people who encourage the 50% floor rule or test retakes.
That's three minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
Sure.
Thanks.
They must implement these policies and see them firsthand and see the effects it has on students. Grades matter, but knowing how to do stuff and deep learning is what matters more. You should ask teachers if these policies are actually helping students learn more or if they're just giving them a free pass. Thank you.
That's the last person we have signed in for public comment. Would anybody else like to make public comment?
John Masolf, Vernon Hills. I have some internal documentation from one of the teacher chats that says, "How do we implement CRT education in science and math classes?" I'd be curious to know what that plan is, and it'd be nice if the community was more aware of it, if you were more transparent about it. Furthermore, I think another problem that I have, or not a problem, but an understanding I'd like to have is, we have a very mixed race and ethnicity of students in this district, as well as in the community, Indian and Asian. Both of them employ in their societies some class and caste systems that are very oppressive. And critical race theory is a theory. And if it's going to be taught in this community and in this education system, then it's going to be truly diverse, equitable, and inclusive, then you should be including the other races and ethnicities and how they operate in their societies with their caste systems that are oppressive as well, because that's the basis of what critical race theory is. That's an oppressive form of society. So I think you need to make the community aware that you're going to look at pushing CRT into the school if you're not already implementing it, and just understand what that policy is. Because I do think it's something that many of the parents and students in this community would like to know a little bit more about. And then if you do, you're going to be diverse, equitable, inclusive. Make sure you include the other races, the other ethnicities, especially the ones that have larger representation in the school and in this community.
I'd like to address, you can have a seat if you're finished, but I'd like to address the fact that we have a significant commitment to equity, but District 128 does not and will not be teaching critical race theory. Moving on, I'd like to invite the teachers' union to give their report.
Good evening. I am Jason Rush, Vernon Hills High School Applied Technology teacher, Libertyville resident, and the D128 Union Building Representative for Vernon Hills High School. My union message tonight is about the EdX Professional Development Day that was last Monday, February 19. Our members would like to thank the administration for hearing our pleas to bring back the pre-pandemic EdX Institute Day. Started in our district in 2017, this day is modeled after the TED Talks, technology, engineering, design, that gained wide popularity about 2012. The TED motto is "Ideas Worth Spreading." Maybe you remember Sheryl Sandberg, Facebook COO, giving insight into leadership, or Elon Musk initiating nationwide conversation about boring a tunnel under LA for more efficient travel. Well, both of those happened at TED conferences. A TEDx event is related to the larger and more well-funded TED conferences, but the emphasis is on the local and grassroots dialogue about ideas worth spreading. The local organization for our event comes from the instructional coaches at both schools, who do a tremendous job managing this event. So, remove a single letter and TEDx becomes EdX. I remember being skeptical about the first D128 EdX event in 2017. Let me get this straight. I'm only going to hear from my colleagues about their ideas and practices? This was so different from my previous 20 years of professional development. My skepticism was quickly replaced with awe and wonder about the capable and qualified individuals who work in D128. This year's event had some 80 certified staff and a total of 90 with admin and ESP stepping up to provide educational ideas worth spreading over four 45-minute sessions. The topics ranged from managing a student-accessible Google Calendar, Vernon Hills Jim Pardon, to streamlining teacher time, LHS's John Taylor, to five different presentations on artificial intelligence. I attended a session about the rollout of the D128 student internship program given by Ben Rodriguez. Lest you think that this concept is of own interest to only tech teachers and counselors, I sat with LHS physics teacher Mike Bush and Vernon Hills Physical Welfare teacher Dina Franchi, who both were there to see how the push for multiple pathways will affect the students they care about. Many of the sessions were presented by two or more educators, working cross-curricularly and combining different points of view. For instance, LHS's Brenda Nelson, Cara Bosman, and Laura Brandt working together. Some of the presentations were for educator enrichment and understanding of the many interesting concepts that students get to learn in D128 every day. For instance, Vernon Hills High School French teacher Christina Hartman and chemistry teacher Sarah Zayer both explored the myth that the breakdown of tin buttons led to Napoleon Bonaparte's defeat in Russia. Us teachers need to have our brains tickled by interesting ideas, too. Lastly, the fourth and final sessions were well-planned with a variety of physical and mental health activities corresponding to the health and wellness strand of the strategic plan. I'll end my message with a truism that I am fond of repeating at the lunch table with my colleagues. Teaching is considered to be the lonely profession. Why? Because more often than not, we are in our classroom managing teaching and learning, yes with students, but alone professionally. What a pleasure it is to be together and to watch our colleagues expertly ply their trade and teach something they know well and feel passionate about. Thank you for bringing back EdX.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. And I will turn it over to our student-school board representatives for their reports.
Good evening. Tonight, I will be reading my own report, followed by Molly and Louis's reports, since they couldn't join us tonight because they're cheering on our girls' basketball team. The girls won their first sectional for the first time in 30 years, 51 to 35, against Hananega, and are playing Loyola for a supersectional tonight at home. Lily and Molly will update us on how it went at the next meeting. This month, the band performed for the winter concert. Each year, one senior is selected to perform a solo with their instrument. They auditioned to an anonymous board, and they chose senior Margot McGormly as the concerto winner, who was ranked the seventh-best performing trombonist in the state of Illinois. I was very lucky to attend and watch her outstanding performance playing "Morsa Symphony" by Alexandre Guilmot. Margot has been one of my best friends for a long time, so I felt really proud of her as I saw her develop into an amazing trombonist throughout the years. Last Thursday, juniors Cassandra Medina and Zoe Azornio from Latin American Student Organization organized a first-ever multicultural night, which featured other affinity clubs like Black Student Union, South Asian Student Association, Jewish Cultural Club, Asian Pacific Islander Club, and the Muslim Student Association. Students bought a cultural savory plate along with desserts for everyone to try at the buffet table. Then each club representative did a show-and-tell or slideshow presentation to teach everyone about their culture. For example, junior Donna Castellanios from Lasso sang a Spanish song along with senior Avila playing his guitar. It was a really fun and educational experience, and I really enjoyed learning about the cultures represented at our school. Friday was the Winter Dance Assembly. Students gathered in the main gym to watch the student dodgeball and basketball teams play against the teacher teams. Unsurprisingly, students won both games. Also, the fencing team and esports were recognized for going to state and competing. It was overall very exciting and fun. Now I'll read Louis's report. "Thank you, Rukaya, for reading on behalf of myself. This past month has been busy in the fine arts department, especially in the last week. Last Sunday, all choir students had the option to sing alongside LHS alumni Philippa Su, a very well-recognized Broadway actress known for playing Eliza Hamilton in the musical Hamilton. She performed a benefit to raise money for the Adler Arts Center here in Libertyville. LHS choir students were able to sing "Morning Glow," a song from the musical Pippin, and "Tomorrow" from Annie. Jordana Blocktersen, a senior, said, 'Pippa was very gracious and professional with us and treated us like we're equals and not just her backup. She genuinely wanted us to be there with her, and it made singing with her feel even more special than it already was. It was the first time that Pippa Su has been back at former high school, and it was a very special and unique experience for many of us. Three days later, on Wednesday, the choir performed their popular cabaret concert featuring musical pop and high-energy song selections. Students also had the opportunity to audition in small groups to perform at the concert. It was a big hit and a great event to showcase the large variety of talent within the choir department. Lastly, with the help of Mrs. Brandt and some students, LHS ran a student-led voter registration drive at the beginning of February to get students ready for the upcoming March 19 primary and November general election. It was led by students each lunch period for a week straight, and in the end, they were able to register 70 students in person and many more online. The ultimate number is estimated at about 100 or more students." Now for Molly's report. "I am currently with Dr. Kay and Louis, supporting our girls' basketball team as they take on Loyola for their supersectional matchup. This month, LHS hosted their Black History Month museum in the library with the help of many clubs, academic courses, and fine arts classes. I was lucky to visit the museum at the same time as Mrs. Greenswag's American Studies class, who made children's picture books of important black figures. Along with the picture books, other exhibits included infographics, live presentations, artwork, and more. The museum was open for all students to stop by and was an informative, entertaining, and impactful experience that reflected our appreciation for the black community's contribution to our world. At 5:30 PM on President's Day, the first whistle of the senior dodgeball tournament blew, beginning an hour of non-stop dodgeball games. The event was entirely organized by the seniors' student council elector to raise money for Blue Cross, as students had to either donate money or a code to enter. I played for one of eight teams, and there was lots of fierce competition, as this year had the biggest turnout since the tournament's creation. Organizer senior Emily Bissing stated that she felt that event went perfectly and was a great opportunity to engage and bring students together to raise money for those in need. Student council hopes that the numbers of participants will only increase in the future. Finally, on Saturday, we had our winter dance, and all eyes were on the silent disco. This year, after its popularity during last year's winter dance and prom, there were more headphones available, attracting more participants. The silent disco is popular because it is a more customizable dance experience, as you are in charge of the music you listen to in the volume it's at. It is also less chaotic, more inclusive, and a good break from the loud gym. I learned that Vernon Hills does not offer a silent disco, and after hearing the positive feedback from the Vernon Hills guests, will encourage the school to find ways to include it into their dances, as it allows for students to create their perfect dance environment. Overall, the past month at LHS has had numerous opportunities for students to come together in exciting ways. Thank you."
"The past few weeks have been full of excitement for VHHS sports and activities. As we just celebrated, our boys' swim and dive team just finished a successful season with a state visit to top it off, where junior Dan Burke, senior Edward Zhao, and senior Eli Spivak were to lead the way with All-State honors. There were also multiple conference and school pool records broken during the last few weeks of their season. Our boys' wrestling team and girls' dance team also had quite a memorable season, as they both had made top-five state finishes. Up into girls' gymnastics, they had yet another successful season, making it to the state championships. Multiple team members qualified for the state competition, including senior Annika Chudi and junior Libby Tron, as well as seniors Sarah Katuski and freshman Maya Brusso. Lastly, our cheer team had a successful season with capping it off 13th in the state. Congratulations to all of them on fantastic seasons. The month of February, VHHS has been celebrating Black History Month by daily facts in the bulletin, as well as a special contest every Thursday. Each Thursday of this month, Dr. G got on the intercom and would ask a question revolving black history, and then a random class was picked to answer the question. If the picked class answered it correctly, the class received special cookies to enjoy. The students really enjoyed this fun activity throughout the month. Also, within school activities, our VH gift club focused their meeting and activities around the possibilities we can have in our future, but also in the future lives of the kids attending our sister school in Uganda. We held a fundraiser with the effort to try and raise money for someone to receive a full scholarship to attend school. Our goal was to raise at least $1,500. We were able to do just that with raising a little over our goal and with the opportunity to grant a scholarship to a student and see what their possibilities are. We are all excited for what other activities are to come."
"This month was a busy one for VHHS. In the first week of February, students got the chance to send out a thank-you message to a counselor for National School Counselor Week. Secondly, Mr. Lukin hosted a field trip to the 2024 Chicago Auto Show on the 15th, where advanced topics computer science students got a chance to experience the tech expo within the auto show. There, they met tech company representatives and CEOs, rode on Honda suitcase scooters, and observed the incredible engineering of private planes and numerous cars, which was particularly insightful for students pursuing careers in engineering. Then, there was Spirit Week with the themes as follows: Chicago Sports Day, where students wrapped their favorite Chicago sports team; Windy City Smokeout, where students dressed up in western attire; Chicago Fire, where students wore red to promote the blood drive; and Cougar Palooza, where students dressed in bright colors for the assembly. The assembly consisted of numerous events, such as the student-versus-teacher basketball game, an all-inclusive heads-tails game, a spectacular performance by dance, winter activities recognition, and the crowd's true favorite hot dog eating contest. The week ended with the Snowcoming Dance, where nearly 500-plus students came to hang out with their friends, roller skate, dance, eat food, take photos, and much more. Finally, on Thursday, Business Professionals of America traveled to Oak Brook to compete in their events. I, alongside many, had the chance to network with others and was particularly happy to make a friend who is heading to UIUC for business, and I'm looking forward to meeting up with him again. Students who didn't attend on Thursday or had made it past prelims in advance to the final round also attended on Friday. After speaking to a few BPA students, they informed me that they were especially grateful for an open-campus lunch as were many surrounding restaurants in the area. Then students attended the award ceremony Saturday morning, where Rohan Gautam Maneni, Kyle Kim, Harrison Kwan, Anari Amara, Siddhartha Vula, Shreeta Chitikala, Riley Mitchell, Griffin Nichols, Sneha Khakia, Reshma Kanchala, Shishikarwa, and Kavyarami will go on and compete at Nationals. The VHHS board reps wish them the best of luck."
"This month, we also had a lot going on inside and outside of the classroom. Firstly, congratulations to the student directors and actors of our annual one-act show. There, we got to see the creative short scenes that were brought to life by our theater department and kept their audience very engaged. Additionally, the Academic Resource Center is getting ready for Wednesday, the start of our SAT prep sessions. Every week leading up to the school-administered SAT, there will be a student-led session to help support specifically juniors in the imminent standardized testing. Many juniors are going to the SAT blind, as the college board is now switching to the digital format. This is why this Wednesday's lesson will focus on the major differences between the paper and digital SAT format and answering questions that many juniors will have. The ARC's hope is to provide support and resources to juniors in order to help everyone put their best foot forward in April. Also, students are preparing for the language fair that will be held in the LMC. In advanced language classes, students will research and create an engaging project to showcase a part of history that is related to their languages. Students also were able to participate in the blood drive last week. Set up in our gymnastics gym, students were able to use their study hall lunch or gym period to help donate blood with the help of Versity, the blood center in Illinois. After checking temperature and iron levels, students donated blood and could help themselves to the plethora of snacks that were provided. Finally, Cougar Class Act winners were awarded last Friday at the breakfast celebration with parents, teachers, and students. Congratulations to Leonore Newman, Olivia Bush, Hannah Stern, Lucas Jackson, Taylor Schmidt, Amelie Stanis, Amelia Torres Melendez, Maya Greenfield, Julius Patea, Nicholas Robles, Andrew Kaiser, Marie Henigan, Polina Chadeva, David Zeroloff, and Valerie Arosco."
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for our student board reps? Okay, great job, guys. Thank you.
I have one. Why did you think that it was just a given that the students were going to beat the faculty in both basketball and dodgeball? I don't get that.
That's more of a rhetorical question.
Hey, look, at Vernon Hills, I think students have only ever won once. The faculty always wins, huh? Yeah, the students jumped out to a thirteen-to-two lead, I think, and then just blew it.
We gratefully acknowledge the competitiveness and the fun that we get to have at both buildings. Moving on, we would like to invite our Director of Special Ed and our Director of Fine Arts at Vernon, no, our, remind me, Mr. Little, your title. Just a teacher, our choral director, Jeremy Little, to give us a very interesting presentation on inclusive fine arts.
Good evening, Board. I'm at that age where my eyes aren't sure if they want the readers or don't want the readers, so bear with me. Good evening, Board of Ed, colleagues, and community. I'd like to ask you to take a step back in time with me to the 2020-2021 school year. Do you remember anything in particular happening in that year?
No, no, what are you talking about?
I'm sure, Lisa, the first thing that you thought of was that that was the year that District 128 expanded its continuum of special education services as we took back the ELS classroom from SEDOL into our community. The Educational Life Skills, or ELS, class consists of instructional courses that are designed to meet the needs of students who have moderate to severe disabilities and who require academics that embed functional life skills such as social pragmatic language, self-awareness and advocacy, independent living and activities of daily living, self-care, vocational readiness, community access and safety, and post-secondary transition planning, as well as provides direct instruction in and support with adaptive behaviors. Within the curricular sequence, opportunities are provided to learn, practice, and generalize functional and adaptive skills within school, pre-vocational, community-based, and recreation and leisure learning experiences. That particular school year, we happened to experience another momentous event, which some may recall was the opening of the school year via remote learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic in a modified hybrid block schedule. As we began to navigate instructional planning for our unique new group of learners, we realized that some adjustments needed to be made in order to create accessible and meaningful learning opportunities for students receiving ELS instruction, particularly in elective content which often is the place where lifelong friendships are formed as young adults share learning in areas of personal interest and preference and where pathways to post-secondary vocational pursuits often develop for many adolescents. We quickly realized due to scheduling conflicts because of all these crazy schedules that everyone was in that that were designed for remote learning across our county that our students, most of whom were slated to attend a SEDOL vocational elective class at a SEDOL building would miss too much instructional time on the days that they would be transported to that site. Also due to COVID, the nature of the class was going to shift from hands-on, authentic learning to paper and video-based learning, which we felt was not going to meet the needs that a learning experience like this should provide for our students. Working with SEDOL and our families, we were able to separate from that class, which required District 128 to creatively and quickly fill elective needs for students in ways that we had never done before. After all, we were only in our first year of taking back instructional planning and this population of students into our district continuum of instruction. That year, our teachers innovatively collaborated to engage our students in a semester of Modified Culinary Arts and a semester of Modified Fine Arts, each of which focused on an introductory walkthrough of all aspects of those specialty areas. Our students loved every minute of it and of what Mr. Little calls a collateral blessing. Isn't that a fantastic term, collateral blessing? That's what this class became. From that one semester start, Mr. Jeremy Little found a special niche of students with whom he could share the joys of the fine arts. And so, he built a course with our lead ELS teacher Danielle Rognor that meets the needs of all students where they are at and builds off of their strengths as they learn music and theater skills including acting, dancing, video production, and set and costume design. It is also a place where students naturally and authentically practice problem-solving, advocating, socializing, organizing, managing, building, self-determining, communicating, imagining, did I say that? And creating. All of those functional and adaptive skills come to life through the arts. Since their partnership in co-teaching this class began, the course has further expanded to inclusively engage even more students who are neurodiverse as well as mentor partners who learn about disability awareness, purposeful questioning, prompt hierarchy support strategies that foster guided and just-right supports with their peer partners as they explore the facets of the fine arts together. This course has become a place where all students learn not just about music and theater but also about working and playing together, accepting each other as each person comes. This evening, I am honored to introduce to you Mr. Jeremy Little, who will share more about his very able students and their very inclusive theater, art, and music course.
Hi, so my name is Jeremy Little. I teach choir here as well as the Inclusive Fine Arts class. I have had the privilege of teaching to board members' children since 2007. It was a collateral blessing that Inclusive Fine Arts kind of came to be. And the reason that I asked Dr. Gilliam and the board and Kelly to be able to present tonight was just to share with you some pretty cool things. I imagine you guys get in the weeds a lot with a lot of awesome details about the district, but that can be sometimes in the weeds. And this is something that I want for you to know you have helped support that really makes a difference in a lot of kids' lives. The students, so we have a show that we put on and in a minute here, I'll show you kind of a video of some with some, well, it's a video. But a great thing has happened when, as we kind of do this class, kids who are in the ELS program and kids who are their peer mentors genuinely work together. I used to teach, I teach choir and before we had it, sometimes we would have students come in and it would be a difficult thing to kind of like take a choir and a kid who is in an ELS program and kind of put that together, right? But this class was built for these two, these populations of kids. Our mentors, this year we have seven peer mentors. Four of them desire to be special ed teachers when they go to school. Two last year of our peer mentors, we wrote college recs for and a scholarship recs for for them to go on in special education. So in the class, we learn musical skills, but we also learn theater skills. So, for example, I'm a theater guy, so I got to bring some props. We're making masks and costumes. We make papier-mache masks. We're doing, this is part of our Savannah unit, so we're lion king-ing it up with stuff. We're making, you know, scuba diving things. We're in the Arctic as penguins. We're making binoculars. Every single one of these props is made by students in this program, right? Alongside a peer mentor, these are real-world projects that they can do. And that is the coolest thing, that it is not, it's very different than a math lesson that they have or something else. This is like real-world stuff and they get to see it come to life. Just starting this week, we are in the auditorium and we are putting it together with our scenery and putting everything together and the excitement and nervousness and energy that comes from a performance, they all get to experience just like, you know, the All-State Theater kids that you saw or the music kids when I teach, you know, I do a regular choir concert. So, it's been a pretty awesome opportunity and we are just, I guess I just want to say we're really grateful to D128, grateful to Kelly, grateful to Dr. Gilliam, Dr. Russell, my supervisor, for kind of supporting this. Also, you know, a big shout out to Kevin Phelan, who is our auditorium manager, for helping us schedule. We are in three different classrooms, four different classrooms sometime. Brian Miller, our autotech guy, they spray painted set pieces. We've had so many faculty members help. And we have two performances on March eighth. So, basically, you're going to see in the video, if you can kind of see it, we invite you to come, March eighth, either eighth hour during the school day in which last year, the auditorium was pretty packed because we invite every teacher who wants to bring their class down to see the show. And then in the evening, we invite parents and community members to kind of come see the show, too. So, I guess this is probably a great time to kind of show the video. But again, we just wanted to say thanks and this is a perfect kind of, like, yeah, a collateral blessing that our students, all of our students can shine and be a part of the fine arts. So, thanks very much.
Thank you for your presentation and for inviting us to the March eighth performance so that we don't miss the chance to join you. Would you mind sending the board an email with the details of both performances? Because I know that there are board members that would really like to attend.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
I was just gonna say that as someone who has been on Best Buddies since I was a freshman, I have a lot of experience working with students with disabilities and I know how creative these students are and how amazing they are. And I would love if we could implement this class at LHS at some point because I really, really like the idea of it.
Thank you. Okay, now I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly to do the FOIA request and good news.
Right, stepping in here for Dr. Herman. So, we do have some FOIA requests and the report for the FOIA request is attached to the board agenda. And now for our good news. The Vernon Hills math team won its regional competition at Stevenson High School on Saturday, February twenty-fourth. Congratulations to the team and to their coaches, Steve Courtney, Jessica Chapman, Lauren Harmon, and Alex Joe. The following D128 students have been named National Merit finalists from Libertyville High School, Cameron Wang, Vanessa Zhang, and Kyle Lee from Vernon Hills High School, Amir Abdulaviv, Shartek Argrawell, Karen Kai, Kristen Choi, Charles Collier, Shahidi Garimallah, Noah Kim, Divya Mudimbi, Tyler Park, and Rain Weiner. The LHS physical welfare teacher, Megan Lavery, was named the recipient of the Illinois State Board of Education Award of Meritorial Service. She received the honor for her work done at her previous district and she continues this work with her students and colleagues at Libertyville High School. This is Meg's first year at Libertyville High School. She previously taught English in District D forty-six from two thousand and five to two thousand and eighteen and then at Health and Wellness at Lake Forest District sixty-seven from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. So, congratulations to Megan. LHS math team members Braden Bradford, Cameron Wang, Eric Lee, Ian Lee, Kyle Lee, Mark Swanson, and Justin Wang submitted perfect papers at the Illinois Mathematics League Competition at LHS on February thirteenth. Libertyville is currently ranked first in Lake County and third in Illinois in this competition. Nine Vernon Hills student artists received regional honors in the Iowa and Midwest Scholastic Art Awards. Gold key winner was Evelyn Weber. Silver key winners, Joe Ning, Madeline Wayne, Orlando Alas Sandoval, Romi Miller. Honorable mentions, Charlotte Smith, Matthew Lee, Orlando Alas Sandoval, and Sam Schlow. As a gold key winner, Evelyn will advance to the national competition this spring. As our student board reps mentioned, the Vernon Hills Chapter of the Business Professionals of America competed at the state competition February twenty-second to twenty-fourth and the following students qualified for the national competition in May. Economic Research Team, second place, Kyle Kim, Rohan Gata Mani Neni, Harrison Kwan. Network Design Team, second place, Siddharth Avula, Riley Mitchell, and Shreeta Chitikala. User Experience Team, design using Adobe XD and Pilot, second place, Snehi Kadkia, Sristi Karwa, Kavarami, and Reshma Kanchala. Presentation Individual, third place, Griffin Nichols. And Health and Insurance and Medical Billing, a pilot, first place, Anari Amara. The team is sponsored by Debbie Beagle, Chris Curry, and Dan Pien. Congratulations to all of them and good luck at national competition in May. Thank you to everyone who generously supported the D128 Foundation for Learning during its fifth annual week of giving. That was back in January of twenty-eight, one twenty-eight. This year's campaign raised eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. All money raised goes to support the students of Libertyville High School, Vernon Hills High School, and Transition Pathways. And that concludes our good news report.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent vote agenda. We are looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Carmichael, so moved.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Hotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. First item up for action, I will turn it over to Don Carmichael for employment of employees.
We have only one agenda item and that's for the employment of employees. It is a momentous addition to what we would normally have done in the consent agenda, but this came up afterwards, so I'll turn it over to Bryant.
We have, in our personnel report, we have an administrative appointment of Tom Clannas for Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. We have some- We have some retirements and a leave of absence in certified staff, and some ESP and coaching extracurricular recommendations. And those are on the employment personnel report.
Very good. May I have a motion to approve the employment items listed that occurred after the PMP committee meeting?
Batson, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Is there discussion?
There is, yes. Okay, then, no, no discussion.
Hearing that there's no discussion. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
And motion passes. I will turn it over to Jim Batson, or do you want to?
I have, so Tom would like to say a few comments on his appointment. And unfortunately, he could not be here with us. He would love to have been here for his appointment, so he's very appreciative of the appointment. Members of the Board of Education and District 128 Community of Students, Staff, and Parents, I'm sorry I cannot be here in person tonight. But as you might, might well expect, I am currently cheering LHS on at the girls' basketball team in the super sectionals. They were down 22-18 at halftime. Thank you for selecting me for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, serving District 128 in any capacity is a tremendous honor. And joining our superintendent's leadership team is an exciting opportunity to help our district continue its legacy of academic excellence. As your Assistant Super for Teaching and Learning, I am committed to building strong relationship with staff members at our three extraordinary schools to help ensure that we are providing them with the best possible resources, technology, and staff development opportunities to enable them to do the best work with our students. I will strive to be a clear communicator and transparent collaborative decision maker, one who seeks to engage a wide range of student, staff, and community voices in the further evolution of our district's curriculum offerings, school practices, and student programming. Since joining the D-128 team as the Libertyville High School principal seven years ago, I have seen time and time again the extraordinary impact that our educators have upon the lives of our students and the great pride our communities have in our schools. Building upon this legacy, it is my intention to work diligently to deepen our district's commitment to its daring mission and our stated goal that each and every student at all three of our schools has the opportunity to thrive, achieve, and excel in exclusive, respectful, and supportive classroom communities. Thank you all for your support of my work at Libertyville High School and your continued confidence in the work that I will help lead moving forward. Sincerely, Tom Clennis.
Congratulations, Tom.
We are very fortunate. We have two of the best principals in the business. Tom has served the LHS school and community with great distinction. And we are thrilled to see him move into his position at the district level. So we will turn it over to Jim Batson for items for action that came out of FNF.
Okay. First on the agenda, out of the finance facilities, summer school fees. Quick background here, we haven't changed our summer school fees in many, many years. I'm not too sure if you want to give a background. I can certainly keep talking.
Yeah, so we talked through different philosophies of, of summer school fees and kind of what changes could look like. And so the, the plan that we discussed at the committee meeting would be for this summer, that no change, 200 is the current fee, so no change for that. But to make a distinction for why students are taking summer school. So if it's for initial credit, it stays at the 200 for this year. If they're taking the class for repeat and replace, they'll be able to pay half off, which is less than what it was last summer. And then if they're taking it for credit recovery, there would be no fee for that. And so for 25, 26, the fee would increase for initial credit by 100 each. So at the end of a couple of years, it'll be at 400.
And it was 200 regardless of the purpose in the past.
Historically, it's been 200. Regardless of the purpose, yes.
Yeah, so it, it, it starts at actually less than where we are now. And then ramps up only for those taking summer school for initial credit, which means to get ahead. That ramps up to $400 in two additional year, two years down the road. Everyone else is either at the 200 or less.
Yes, and be, be aware for students would still.
These would be included in that to, to waive that. Okay. Can we have a motion in a second?
We, we don't need action on this, do we?
I believe we do.
Actually, no.
Yeah, the recommended action is to approve the fees, so we do need a motion.
Yeah.
Hessel, motion to approve the fee schedule for summer school fees is listed.
Benjamin, second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion comments from the board?
This still keeps us very much within our neighboring districts market, you know, our kind of market rate right in the middle.
Correct, and, and we feel makes the distinction between credit recovery, retake, and initial credits to allow for those, those variances.
Okay, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. And next on the agenda is a landscape bid. We have a, for the board consideration, a recommendation to approve a bid from Landscape Concepts Management for district landscaping services for the coming five years in the amount of $160,002.26. We have a motion, please?
Hessel, motion to approve the bid from Landscape Concepts as listed.
Drumkey, second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Just to note, this was discussed at committee meeting earlier in the month. And so we have plenty of information on this previously. Can we have a roll call, please?
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. We have a recommendation to approve the bid for LHS ceiling, lighting, and HVAC repairs with Bowler Construction Company for their base bid and alternate number two. It's a total amount of $954,000. And we are rejecting alternates one and three. Dan, do you have any further?
Just that this is a, a few projects kind of lumped in together. We get just a better economy of scale by combining some of these together. So that's why Mark put, put those together with his team. So yeah, that, these are, these are part of our summer capital list that we've talked about before. And so the totals are all in there.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Carmichael, move to approve the bid for the LHS ceiling, lighting, and HVAC repairs with the Bowler Construction Company base bid and alternative number two in the total amount of $954,000 and reject alternatives one and three.
Colcarney, second.
The further discussion from the board? Again, this was reviewed in detail at our committee meeting. We have a roll call, please.
I actually have a question. Sorry, I missed the meeting. But in light of the petition for sustainability initiative, my question was, with these lighting, HVAC repairs, et cetera, are we including replacements that are sustainable? Green, all of those things? Like if you're replacing lights is an example.
Sorry, could you, could you say this question again?
Yeah, anytime we're looking at upgrades to equipment, my question is, are we looking at the most energy efficient capital equipment that we are bringing on?
The answer is yes. All the new lighting will be replaced with high efficiency LEDs as well as motion sensors in the hallways. So if nobody is in the hallway and a lights happen to, you know, switches happen to be on, the lights will automatically turn off with no movement, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for that. That's a good question. Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Last on the agenda is Vernon Hills High School life safety work and LST area remodel bid. Again, this is one of those where we combine a few things together. In, in summary, the recommendation is for the board to approve a Bowler Construction, again, for the LST remodel in the amount of $271,000. And Bowler Construction Company for the HLS repairs in the amount of $274,000. And the LST is, is it right back here? You have any additional? Oh, it's downstairs. You're right, you're right. Any additional background on that?
Just, this is not part of our summer, summer projects, but this is part of our capital projects fund. So this is basically cash coming from our fund balance based in our, this is budgeted for this year. Vernon Hills had their 10-year life safety approved last summer, where every 10 years architects have to come through, walk the building, and look to see what complies with or doesn't comply with current health, life, safety codes. And then they give us a list of things to fix. And there's three priorities. Priority A, things have to get fixed within a year. B, things that have to get fixed within five years. And then C, things that they're recommending to get fixed, but there's no timeframe attached to them. We've been focusing on A, because those are the ones due in a year. And so Mark's been working on that. This bid encapsulates a lot of that work to wrap that up, because we need a trade to do that, a lot of that work. The LST remodel is related to our long-term capital plan and the, the prioritized projects that we did. And so this was one of those three projects that we have been moving forward. So this is the bid to reconfigure those LST offices in the, below us.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so that, when I described this, it was the HLS repairs, that's the health, life, safety repairs that are.
Yeah, health, life, safety from the 10-year health, life, safety study for Vernon Hills.
Can we have a motion, please?
Benjamin, I move to approve Bowler Construction Company for the LST remodel in the amount of $271,000. And Bowler Construction Company for the HLS repairs in the amount of $274,000.
Any questions from the board?
Hessel, second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you off. Any questions from the board? Comments? Again, this was reviewed earlier in the, in the committee meeting earlier in the month. Can we have a roll call, please?
Cotwell.
Hi.
Colcarney.
Hi.
Batson.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Motion passes. Back to you.
Okay, for information, I will turn it back over to Brian Kelly for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First on the superintendent's report, just give a update on community education program. And so again, for board members, last year was our last year of community education at District 128. When we disbanded the program, there was a couple of things. One thing in particular that we kept on in our program, and that was the North Suburban Wind Ensemble. And so we, much like we run some of our other programs, Master Swim, we kept North Suburban Wind Ensemble underneath us. We organized it and we worked with Randy Sundell and Don Schupfer running it before. And so they helped with our signups. We had 55 adults sign up this year. We had a fall concert Sunday, November 5th. We have a winter concerts coming up Sunday, March 10th, and a spring concert Sunday, May 19th. Actually, the winter concert Sunday, March 10th is 4:00 to 5:30, the Vernon Hills Auditorium. The concert is free for anyone to come, so we don't even charge. The income from North Suburban Wind Ensemble and then paying Don and Randy, we did not lose money in that. And we're able to, you know, even fund, I think, some, getting some sheet music and other stuff. So it's not costing the district anything to run that program, and it's a, a great program for that. Some of the other programs that we had, we do have Libertyville using some of our rooms up at Libertyville High School. And I think they're hoping to expand a little bit more. You know, that's Libertyville High School, Libertyville, Village of Libertyville is a little different than Vernon Hills in that Vernon Hills has a park district, Libertyville does, and everything falls under their village. But they did have some of our programs at the school, so woodworking, cooking, baking. I think they're looking to expand a little bit more. Vernon Hills picked up some of our programs and our instructors. They didn't really move a lot over here because they do have facilities that they, obviously, they want their programs, people to use their facilities. But we still partner with them for their swim program already. So we, you know, are continuing hopefully to help our communities with facilities for adults and for adult education. We're just not running the adult education. But I think this change has been good for the district. And North Suburban Wind Ensemble has been going off without a hitch. So just wanted to give that brief update. Another update on, is on edX, and I don't know, Jason Rush, I should have him back up here to give the update. He did a fantastic job on that. But again, edX was a Teacher Institute Day back in February. I do, I would like to acknowledge and thank a few people for their work on this institute day. A lot goes into that day, so it's not just, you know, showing up and people all of a sudden just walking into a classroom with somebody who's presenting. There's a lot of work first done behind the scenes from our curriculum team and some of our administrators and our instructional coaches, so Brian Wegley, Joel Bryan, Ray Albin, Charlotte Eames, Kelly Hartwig, and Tom Clennis also stepped in that team to make sure that we had presentations and sessions for our educational support staff. And our instructional coaches, they do a lot of legwork. They, you know, get our teachers involved, they get the schedule out, and they ensure that that day goes smoothly. So from Vernon Hills High School, Mandy Carroll, Brendan Waters, Corey Smith, and Rebecca Garcia. And then from Libertyville, Kim Jansen, Tammy Rendy, Heidi Lechner, and Katie Becker. And I would like to acknowledge and thank all of our teachers, support staff, and administrators that step up to present. They don't get paid extra to do it. They don't get extra time to prepare for it. And so they're doing it on their time, and they're doing that because they love to share their knowledge and with their colleagues. And so it was a, it was a great day. And again, in the afternoon, our team spent time with their departments. So thank you to our apartment chairs for the work that they did in the afternoon. And I apologize if I missed anyone, but I think I try to acknowledge that it was a successful day this year for us. The other report that I want to, that I want to include in there, and I think you had a handout on that, was the Equity Journey Continuum update. And so the report was attached from Charlotte and Larry Varn. And so in that report, again, they, back in December, presented on our Equity Journey Continuum. And that was looking at a report card. So some of the comparisons from the 2022 report card. But there was a question in that, in our student learning category analysis, on our student learning overall score from 2019 to 2022 showed that it went from 2.91 to 1.92. And the question was, you know, why that drastic dip, why that change? And so Charlotte Eames and Larry Varn kind of looked at that, and they determined that there was a score, advanced academic programs in 2019 that had a score of 2.8, but on 2022 is at 1.0. So they did a deep dive into that and then analyzed that. They received mid-January, so that's why we're bringing it to you now. So again, this is December 11th, they brought it to the board, did a deep dive. I think there were some questions about that, obviously with the holidays. I think there was some delay hearing back from ISB, so Illinois State Board of Education. But it has been updated. And so if you look in the handout, our student learning overall score, again, was 2.91 in 2019. Re-reported in December, it was 1.92. It actually increased to 3.02. And again, that advanced learning program, which was previously reported to be 1.0, actually went up to 3.0, so there was a mistake. So that's the update. So again, you know, thank you to those that ask questions. And thank you to Larry and to Charlotte for giving us an update on the Equity.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the administrative team doing that deep dive and really digging in to find out.
and really digging in to find out why that score dropped so much. And it, I imagine, is no small task to get ISB to update our report card metrics. So kudos to Charlotte and Larry for really digging in and having the fortitude to stick with it with ISB to get that updated. And I look forward to our continuing work in that area.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Moving on to board comments and events. I think we're going to actually start with the ISB report, because we've got the ISB and COSPA, and then we can scroll back.
Several things that would be considered events and coming up and whatnot related to IASB. First, I'll start by saying I was honored to represent District 128 and the Lakes Division of IASB at the National COSPA Conference. It's the consortium of state school board associations. It's a, just a bit of a history on that for those that might not understand this. It's a relatively new organization. About 18 months ago, a group of leaders from the Illinois Association of School Boards, as well as several other states, and some folks from what was, what is the National Association of School Boards, which our state used to coordinate with, decided that they felt it was important to create a new organization from a fresh perspective. That organization was built and hosted their first conference a year ago. They accomplished all that in just six months. The current executive director of that organization is the former executive director of the IASB, our School Board Association, Tom Bertrand. And it's been very successful. 26 of the states have joined on to that organization and growing. They held their second annual conference. We were in Dallas, Texas. And it's a three-day conference with an extra day up front with some specific learning opportunity for a pre-conference session. Illinois was well represented. We were the largest state, from our understanding, largest state represented at this conference. But there were a few thousand folks in attendance. And from this area, I represented District 128. There were several, I think, three board members from District 70 in Libertyville, two or three board members from District 73, or 79, I should say, the Fremont School District. So our community was well represented. It was, by contrast, it's a little different. Everyone that's been to the III Conference, that's a conference of conferences. That's a multiple organizations hosting a conference simultaneously. So you have not only the Association of School Boards from Illinois, but you also have the business administrators, the school business officials all coming together. So there's a much larger pool of people able to attend that. So this was smaller, yet it was very focused just on board member interests. So that was a much more focused event. Very nice presentations, excellent keynote. The conference next year, I think it's moving to April, from what I understand, or maybe late March, and it will be in Atlanta, Georgia. So as I hear more about that, I'll pass the word, and we can discuss whether we want to have anyone represent us at that event. But nevertheless, it was a, it was a great, great event. Each of you received this on your table. This is the, at a glance, how the resolution becomes a position statement. This is our annual IASB process for getting resolutions sent to the Delegate Assembly, then the annual meeting at the III in November. So if you want to take a moment to take a look at this, if you have some topic that you feel is really pressing, that you feel should be one of the IASB advocacy initiatives, we should submit that and see if we can get that on the agenda for that. As you know, IASB does two primary things. It's an instructional and networking opportunity for us as board members, but it's also a, our representative down in Springfield, and to some extent in Washington, DC, to help the legislators understand the needs of school, public school districts. And so this sort of lays the groundwork for the initiatives that they take as a priority to that work. So take a look at that. One more quick reminder, if you haven't signed up and you want to, on March 13th, Wednesday, March 13th, is the spring or winter, I don't know what they call it, the IASB Lakes Division Dinner Meeting. It's going to be here in Mundelei. I believe it starts around 6 o'clock, so if you want to attend that, I will be attending that. And that's, that's one of the things that our division committee that I sit on, on our behalf, helps coordinate. So our neighbors, actually, our center district, Pete Hannigan, Dr. Hannigan from Hawthorne, and their Communications Director will be presenting on, I don't know the exact wording of the topic, but basically, yeah, how do you communicate across different generations of people working in your, in your district? So it should be a very interesting presentation when he gets, when they get to doing that. So I'd encourage you to attend. That's it for me.
I have a quick update for EdRed. We are going to do our inaugural field trip to Springfield. Districts are welcome to send delegates for people that would like to go to Springfield, get a tour, spend the night, meet with legislators. That will be on April 10th. More information will be emailed to all EdRed members. Any other reports or activities that board members would like to share? Okay, then we are going to take a brief look at our future agenda items. There are several listed for both committee and the March board meeting. Are there any that board members would like to suggest for consideration? If you think of anything, you are welcome to send me and Dr. Herman an email. At this time, we are going to look for a motion to convene in closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters under 5ILCS 120/2C2.
Carmichael, so moved.
Okay, Batson, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are adjourned, and we are convened in closed session at 8:30, 8:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.